Open public comment. Yes, if we can all hold our files to afterwards, very end, we'll take a short break at the end of public comment and have a rest room period, but please, let's try to reframe clapping in between if possible. Thank you.
All right, the first three speakers will be Bill Speeden, Lillian Burns, and Gary McFadden.
Good evening, I'm Bill Speeden, live in Somerset, Scoville Town, if anybody familiar with that one. I've lived here in Orange County since 1937, and memories include playing marbles at the Bellevue Avenue School in third and fourth grade. You remember the game, a circle drawn in the dirt on the playground. The object was to knock out the ring of other people's marbles, which became yours. Some people will tell you that I lost my marbles then, and my wife will verify their occasion, I never got my marbles back. At that time, I was aware there was at least one of our neighbors was gay. Most neighbors accepted him as he was, but several spoke out in pejorative terms. His family was mostly in Iowa. Our country has had trouble accepting the LGBTQ thereafter referred to as LGBTQ community into our society as equals. Psychologists now tell us that in lay and simplified terms, differences between people are often caused by various levels of estrogen and testosterone in our bodies. All of us have hormones in us. We have no control over the level we have initially. Our choices fit parental rights versus the mental health rights of our children. Trans and gay youth need protection from not supporting parents and peers. If you vote for these policies, can you be happy with a probable resulting increase in suicide rates? We now see some politicians claiming our school system is grooming our children to detransition. How many teachers do you know that come to school with thoughts of encouraging little Charles to become Little Charlie? Recognition that gay and trans people exist does not constitute grooming. By outing students against their will tends to make them targets of harassment and abuse by peers and parents, not to mention some students. Standing up in the face of injustice is never easy, but it is the right thing to do. If the child had a good relationship with their parents, they would normally already know. The current Z generation has made it easier for gay and trans people to come out of the closet and feel more comfortable being themselves. It'd be a shame to reverse this trend. According to Wikipedia, in 2016, 3.4% of Virginia's population fell into the LGBTQ category. In 2010, there were over 14,000 same-sex households in Virginia. The government has no business not facing the reality that these citizens are accepting them as they are, as opposed to harassing them because of some preconceived notions by our politicians. One's sensual preferences is no bearing as to one's ability to positive tribute to society if one is not punished for being who and what they are. When in doubt, don't. When in doubt, don't. Thank you.
Ms. Lillian Burns.
Hello, thank you for listening to me briefly. My name is Dr. Lillian Burns. I reside in Richmond area, actually. I have relations, my uncle slash surrogate dad, Bill Speeden, who I spent a great part of my childhood growing up with, and I have a few. I felt compelled to communicate my thoughts and feelings about this issue, LGBTQ plus issue, which is very near and dear to my heart. The policy of forcing the disclosure of school staff of gender orientation to parents, I really am very concerned about this being promoted. I believe that this creates an unsafe environment and climate in the school where students are fearing being outed to a hostile audience. It is pretty much the opposite, I think, of the safe and supportive environment that you're charged with providing children in the school system. And we know through research, it's the upper-level critical thinking, higher-level problem-solving brain that we want to activate for learning to take place. And if a child or a youth is in that survival emotional mode, the neocortex is not in full operation, and the student is probably not really getting what all that they need to do in school. I think we really need to look at this. Forcing the outing of an LGBTQ plus student before they are ready or without their consent, in my opinion only, is as unethical as it is harmful. I have worked in the school system for 30-plus years, I'm recently retired, and I do express these opinions just based on my point of view. Already, our LGBTQ plus youth are exposed to an unhealthy level of stigmatization and rejection. Forced disclosure amplifies this real or perceived sense of alienation and creates the perfect storm for a mental health crisis. And I speak with experience, sometimes my job at the secondary level was almost up to 60%, conducting what are called threat assessments for children and making sure that they were getting the adequate supports that they needed because of the psychological health. Now, don't get me wrong, I think we have common ground, keeping parents informed that parental rights are important. I want to know what my kid's doing, absolutely. But I also, and I think it's because we all want our children to be successful, the parental rights are there for the goal of protecting children. And by forcing forced disclosure for children is accomplishing the opposite of protection. It discourages students from seeking support in the first place from parent or adult, or unfortunately, in my experience I've observed, exposes them to a hostile situation at home. Not all families have the same level of resources, psychological health, to receive the information and support of them. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Gary McFadden.
Dr. Horne and school board members, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My reasons for addressing you are dual. First, I'd like to thank you for your prior decision to compugiate the inclusion of former Board of Education ed equity framework in the training programs, curriculums, materials in Orange County public schools. You deserve the public's gratitude. Thank you again for your collective support of the resolution to prohibit divisive content in Orange County public schools. My second reason for addressing the board is to respectfully ask the board to continue to fulfill its responsibilities as elected officials in a representative democracy by supporting the rights of parents to be notified of healthcare services, materials, discussions related to sexual orientation, gender identity, and any other sexually explicit content, as well as all decisions affecting their children's mental, physical, and emotional well-being, including but not limited to self-identification. The voters in Orange County have placed power in the hands of you who are representatives, who are elected by us, the people. Voters trust that the people we elect will support the ideals of the majority of the voters who elected them. To that end, regardless of your personal attitudes, you have a duty to subordinate your personal desires to the will of the majority of your constituents. The bulk of Orange County is populated by parents and grandparents who embrace traditional values. Please ask yourselves, the small and vocal minority that monopolized comments during past meetings is truly representative of the majority of your constituents. Following passage of Virginia Senate Bill 656 during the 2022 legislative session, written notice of sexually explicit content is now a requirement. As such, school boards are required to adopt policies which comply with Senate Bill 656 before January 1, 2023. By extension, Orange County public schools should adopt resolutions which comply with current laws and regulations. I respectfully implore this board to fulfill the responsibilities which adhere to them in a representative democracy. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Larry Scott, Allman, and Philip Fart.
Good evening, board members. I am Chair Dr. Horne. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It brings me no joy to be here this evening, but I do carry with me a strong sense of duty for my faith and moral principles that govern my thoughts and actions. It is the very same sense of duty that bring others to stand with me in solidarity tonight, and I'm honored to be here with you, so thank you. Senate Bill 908 passed in 2013, it recognizes parental rights. Senate Bill 656, just passed this year, requires written notice of sexually explicit or gender identity content. School boards are required to adopt the policy modeling Senate Bill 656. Proving this is Quinter's resolution would bring you into compliance, and not just approve the resolution, but let's make some policy tonight, not to put these parents and all the people through this again. I think we can get that done with the new law that's passed. School boards are required to adopt the policy modeling Bill 656. That's the political side of the matter. There's another story here, and it's a spiritual one. The very reason the atmosphere in the room is a little heavy tonight. Satan is doing everything he can to destroy our youth and control their minds. He hates family because family is a microcosm of our relationship with Jesus. This is why I felt Romans 12 and 2, "Do not conform and renew our minds," was so important back in April. That's why I quoted that scripture, because Satan is attacking the minds of the young people. After hearing the parent mention the possibility of having the afternoon Satan Club here in Orange, this only strengthens our resolve to take a stand and call the church to action through prayer and fasting and outreach. I recently did a FOIA request, of the FOIA request within Orange County public schools, and found that a person that was opposing the resolution in April did a FOIA request on God. To request God is to acknowledge that he exists. I do believe we are making progress. I don't pretend to know what life is like at home for any of the students here tonight. Some of them, school may be the only place of solace in a crazy or nonexistent family environment. The LGBTQ movement may have offered some sense of artificial comfort, acceptance to those students, but that is where the lie began. That is the enemy that came in to steal and destroy your innocence and your morality. The truth is, everyone will let you down, your father, your mother, your best friends. The only person that won't let you down is Jesus. He is a friend that's closer than a brother. He will never let you down. He loves you, and he offers you life more abundantly. He knows the words of his conference.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Paul Vog, I live in Roseville. I'm here to show my support for Chelsea's resolutions that support parental rights. Both Ms. Quinter and Governor Youngkin made parental rights and education the top issue in last year's election. According to the Virginia Department of Election website, both Chelsea and Glenn Youngkin carried Orange County with over 66% of the vote. That's two-thirds. That's a clear majority. It's a supermajority. Their landslide victory is a clear mandate for parental rights and rejection of the woke leftist agenda promoted by the education establishment and the Democrats. I came to the first school board meeting held when we discussed these resolutions and heard the angry voices of great students and Democrats who declared supporting these resolutions were racist, homophobic, and any number of isms, and made personal attacks on Chelsea. I didn't like that. To me, this only further demonstrates that we have a serious problem of leftist indoctrination in our schools. Sadly, it is easy to see how our college campuses have embraced this nonsense, as administrators led a fringe group of leftist lunatics to crypto-communist social justice policies that have now spread into our education establishment, from our education establishment, into our government, news media, legal community, and other institutions. It is not natural for young people to be obsessed with politics. It requires indoctrination. If there is one message that school board can send, it would be to have a zero tolerance policy for teachers that use their classroom to push a political agenda. When I was in school, our teachers, both liberal and conservative, taught us to question authority and that censorship was evil. If it isn't already, George Orwell's 1984 should be required reading as it was when I was in school. When the government education establishment pushes insane gender theories that disagree with biological truth, it reminds me of 1984, when Big Brother in the party pronounced that two plus two equals five. Once you can convince a person to accept an obvious lie, they will believe any nonsense the government pushes. If you watch the news, this is getting rather obvious. I'm going to close with a quote from Orwell, "Freedom is the freedom to say that two plus two makes four." If that is granted, all else follows. Thank you very much.
So, I may be a bit resented for the resolution. It's actually strange to be here, to have to articulate reasons, because it's held about five minutes ago to seem like common sense. But, so as you know, there are emerging themes of sexually explicit material being introduced to kids across the country. As you also know, the number of young people who are identifying as LGBTQIA+ is also rising dramatically, and perhaps coincidentally, if not, the number of suicidality is also increasing, you know, to a very large degree. And so, while we can't say they're all related, or we can't necessarily, there's a positive relationship, you know, I think we can address some of the issues. So, let's talk about some facts. I know some other people have, are able to articulate the Christian perspective a lot better than I can. I appreciate that view. I will focus on science and facts. And so, to start with, what we know from studies is that exposure to sexually explicit material in early age leads to risk behavior and suicidal outcomes. So, and we also know that with the very large increase in the number of young people identifying as LGBTQIA+ we're seeing a lot of those behaviors. And according to CDC data, young people who identify as gay or lesbian are about four times as likely to suffer depression or suicide. The rates for transgender youth are concerning on an entirely different model. According to the Journal of Pediatrics, and I covered 2018, so this is preemptive, and this is also, I'm sure the number of people who identify this way has grown, it's been actually since 2012. The rate of attempted suicide of female to male transgender adolescents is 50.0%. That's five zero point eight percent. Transition doesn't actually present, prevent suicide in teens. That is what the data shows us. It doesn't lower rates for adult years. Swedish study showed adults who underwent surgical transition are 19 times more likely to commit suicide. Female to male participants in the study had suicides rate, suicide rates 40 times the expected rate. So, the assertion that wider acceptance will lead to lower suicide rates isn't supported by the data. It's become, and for young people today, there are no areas, there are no hangups, it's widely accepted, maybe with a few exceptions. But we know that the rates of self-harm and suicide are very concerning. So, it seems to be a social contagion, and this is basically on the level of our children being in a burning, potentially, of our children being in a burning burning.
The next three speakers are Nathan Russell, Kathleen Moe, and Guy Langley.
Good evening, fellow parents and public school faculty. My name is Nathan Russell. I've lived here in Orange County for almost 18 years. I'm a product of the Orange County Public School System, from elementary school to graduating OCHS with a high school diploma. This education propelled me to be successful, to live a successful career in the United States Navy, and I'm currently a student at Lehigh University. I am proud, I am a proud parent of a wonderful five-year-old son that will soon follow as a student in the Orange County Public School System. I'm here to speak on behalf of all students and parents who don't feel comfortable with the recent changes that have been proposed in public school across our country. And it's our sole duty as parents to preserve the minds of our children and to teach them how to be successful members of society. The school system is there to be a partner, not an arbiter in our child's development. We are the experts of our children, and we know the best way to approach it was sensitive information. Our children are still learning what it means to live the human condition, as well as find their place amongst their family members, peers, and ultimately, the world. If we're not careful, we can confuse and disorient our children's views, and that could be catastrophic to their mental and moral development. A parent's role in their child's development is not only an able right, but also paramount in the child's personalized understanding of the world that we live in. This is a delicate situation that we should not force or overlook. The school system has no right to indoctrinate the young minds of children with a cookie cutter moral and political agenda. The school system should only teach the established and concrete factual academic material appropriate to their level and development. To step out of this role is unethical, insulting to the families and students who rely on the public school that provide their education. It is our duty as a community to ensure that these roles are never crossed or tarnished. The family dynamic is sacred and should not be broken in any way. We must show the Orange County will not sit and turn over and let someone decide on the behalf of our, of the parents, what is good for our children. I will not remain silent. I will speak to the families on both sides of this controversial argument. We must not force a new sexualized curriculum on our children when they are so young and impressionable. Why should my five-year-old son be taught sexually explicit material in K5 and be expected to understand said material when we as adults are still not entirely sure how the best way is to approach this complex phenomenon known as sexual identity? This seems like a half-cooked idea that everyone is trying to get behind because it's glorified, accepted on most modern medias. I will not allow my child to be indoctrinated by people who are not experts and have been through, and that have not been through four years of specialized training, like a teaching degree in math and science, to then teach my child about something as complex as sexual identity. This sounds like a recipe for disaster. I will take my child to a school that defends and honors the family dynamic, and that has the best intentions for my child, and that does not push political agendas.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Moe. I live in Roseville. I've worked in school systems as a teacher and administrator, and I support Quinter's resolution for sexually explicit material, which is in line with state law. Kids are being led to believe that feeling different or sad or confused is a sign that they may be transgender, that hormones or surgery are necessary to avoid depression and suicidal feelings. Though gender dysphoria is not new, the explosion of young people identifying as transgender reflects a movement driven by activism and ideology, not evidence-based science. While Abigail Spanberger might deny the facts about transitioning, it is not hyperbole, oh, sorry, I'm short. It is not hyperbole to say that it can result in mutilation and sterilization. Puberty blocker Lupron is the same chemical used to castrate violent sex offenders. Kids are told that these changes are reversible and harmless, but the drugs can block a body from experiencing natural changes. And hormones regulate a variety of bodily processes, can even influence the immune system and alter behavior. Blocking them as major changes are occurring is proving to be harmful. Children as young as 13 have undergone double mastectomies, and children even younger have started on hormones. Around the world, lawmakers are becoming aware of these practices and looking to ban them. The profit motive is becoming clear, as hospitals and surgeons are caught on tape encouraging gender-affirming services because they are big moneymakers and patients require a lot of follow-ups. Class action lawsuits with thousands of plaintiffs are coming together, and detransitioners are asking why adults didn't protect them from making irreversible decisions. Parents need to know what has gone on with their children. Thank you.
Thank you, school board. Appreciate the time to talk tonight. First, I want to thank you for passing the Divisive Content Resolution that Chelsea introduced back in April. Thank you for that. Second, I'm here to support the Sexual Explicit Content Resolution that was entered by Chelsea also in April of this year. This resolution was entered to protect students against sexually explicit material and to make sure parents are informed and approved of what is being taught in our schools. As a result of the Virginia Senate Bill 656, which has been passed into law, the school board should inform parents about any curriculum using sexually explicit materials in education and offer the parents an option to opt out for their children if they so desire. I recommend that the entire school board vote for this resolution. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Kent Hoocher, Terry Pace, and Bobby Pace.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It seems that many on this board follow in the recent rallying cry of parental rights, which I think would mean that you support parents' rights in education. I've always felt that I've had parental rights and chosen to exercise them throughout my children's education. I've never felt like parents didn't have rights. However, now this is the current political catch-all. Therefore, I think it is my parental right to have a school board that is transparent to all parents. However, this board tried to subvert some parental rights by submitting an agenda for this meeting last week, and then later adding an agenda item that you knew would be controversial. More shocking is the fact that there were Facebook posts from individuals supporting Ms. Quinter's resolutions, saying that the resolutions would be discussed tonight, and calling for parents to speak at tonight's meetings. These calls were posted on Thursday of last week. However, the addition of the resolution discussion was not publicly added to the agenda until Friday. So, some members of this board are yet again acting unethical in that they are sharing agenda items to their supporters before the items are made public. How is this supporting parental rights? You get elected by saying you want to listen to parents, yet you try to sneak in agenda items to suppress opposing public comment and to support your own agenda. This is unprofessional, unethical, and hypocritical. You can't have your cake and eat it too. You want to alert parents of any mention of gender or gender identity and even claim that these ideas are sexually explicit, but you want to deny parental rights in having a voice at these meetings. How does that work? How is this even promoting parental rights? With discussion of Ms. Quinter's updated resolution, this resolution continues to contain vague and obscure language and obscure legal cases that really have no meaning for public education school system. These cases just seem to be sprinkled in without a clear purpose or understanding the relation. More importantly, this updated resolution continues to make correlations between gender and sexual explicitness. These ideas are not related, and it is disheartening when our resolutions about education do not present academic educated view of the terms you're trying to impact. Moreover, this resolution does not align with the definitions of the governor's policies, which can be found in Virginia Code 2.2-2828, and defined as, quote, "sexual vestality, elude exhibition of nudity as sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sedamasochistic abuse," end quote. I can assure you that my children have never been exposed to any of this material while attending OCPS, as there are already policies in place that prevent this type of material in the classroom. Moreover, most importantly, there is no mention of gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation in the governor's definitions. This further supports the fact that Ms. Quinter's resolution does not reflect an understanding of what constitutes sexual explicitness and is not in alignment with the governor's policies. Therefore, Ms. Quinter's resolution must be dissolved and be opposed. Thank you.
I support, um, parent notification, I didn't hear you. I support the parent notification resolution. There's nothing controversial in it. It states plainly the truth, that children should not be subjected to sexual material or curriculum without or curriculum without parental consent. And that children and teenagers are not the lord of the state in the United States of America, they still belong to their parents. And this anti-parent, anti-family actually using the adjective outing for, is insulting and offensive. And you don't out a child to their own parents. Furthermore, you cannot educate anyone if you do not start and end with the truth. To advocate to teenagers that they can take hormones and cut off appendages and be different from their God-given DNA is incomprehensible and evil. This woke indoctrination is insidious and it must stop. The fact that, I mean, I don't know what's going on at the high school and at the elementary school, but it's not education. Why are we having for months sexual content? That is not what, that's not the tool that advances the opportunities for our children and that's why they're in school. That's what they're supposed to get from education. Opportunities and skills to go forward, to make their life the way they want to make it. And that we're having this sexual conversation for four months, it's an issue and it is a darn big problem. And we've got to get rid of this woke agenda in our school system and get back to educating and giving our children tools. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bobby Pace, I'm a lifelong resident of Orange County. I have come three, twice before, this is the third time before this board to express my support for the resolution that is before the board for adoption. Once again, I would like to thank those members who support this resolution and say to those of you who do not that you are demonstrating a lack of the moral and intellectual fortitude which is vital in performing your duties as members of this school board. I think this community will certainly judge you harshly when the appropriate time comes. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Alyssa Waller, Rob Patera, and June Melton.
The true history of America and atrocities that have taken place and lies still to cover them up has been educational points I was fortunate enough to learn from my parents as well as in the world of academia. Young people look to trusted adults for guidance and clarity in life. The guidance and clarity they received growing up is what ultimately shapes them into the adults they become. Implicit bias comes from messages, attitudes, and stereotypes we pick up on the world we live in as well as specifically from people and life experiences we engage in on a daily basis. A young man entered my IAS room and says, "Mrs. Waller, did you see those police that killed themselves another nigger?" I instantly thought it was behind the punch and a gun. Tears began to form. I asked the child, "Did he realize what he said, the meaning and why I'm now offended?" He didn't realize he used such an offensive word and immediately became apologetic. He looked up the word and why it was offensive and again was remorseful. See, educating him had more of an impact than shying away from such a difficult conversation. March of 2015, OCH adjusted national news for a two-minute segment of a Black History Program where Officer White was offended and he was offended and he was not in attendance and was uncomfortable explaining to his nine-year-old child why were Black people being shot by the police. The lack of using such a teachable moment fueled fear and anger in OCH and ultimately ended what had become a wonderful annual Black History Program and was educating the community on history even if it was from just a month ago. August 12, 2017, Unite the Right Rally Charlottesville made national news. Racism in Virginia is now in full view instead of being hidden in the shadows. Both of these events brought attention for the need of educational opportunities on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to prepare students to function and conceive in a diverse society and world. Divisive content proposal previously passed and a sexually explicit content proposal both do the direct opposite for the students of OCH. Considering only one board member replied to my email questioning specifically what parts of OCH's curriculum makes these proposals mandatory and the admission from said board member and author of proposals had not been reviewed, the entire curriculum grade by grade, I find extremely confusing how such a proposal, the termination of a proposal was made. I urge you to consider voting no on the sexually explicit content proposal as well as reversing the decision on divisive content proposal. As you all should be aware, Virginia governors have limited control over individual school divisions. The federal courts have thus far ruled that the United States Constitution Title IX protect transgender students from the school bathroom policy that prohibits them from affirming their gender identity. It's the Board of Education that has final say over the state's standards of learning. Virginia policy does not, as it legally could not, direct Virginia schools to discriminate against transgender students where prohibited by federal law. Both proposals are unacceptable as well as unnecessary considering policies are already in place and were proven to be effective just a few weeks ago when OCHS students were underprivileged in both sets of specific content. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can we all just take a moment just to take a deep breath? I come before you again as a frustrated parent. I'm frustrated because some of you don't have, it seems like that some of you don't have the best interest of all Orange County Public School students in mind. And some of you, and some of you are attempting to divide us. Orange County is a great place to live. Orange County schools can be a great school system. I'm humbly asking the School Board to begin bringing us back together. Let us be great. Let us have respectful conversations about divisive issues that have happened in the past. We are OC. We want to have these conversations so that they will not divide us in the future. Let us be great. We are OC. We want you to put more of your energy into ensuring that all Orange County Public School Systems receive a well-informed, fair, and equitable education. Let us be great. We are OC. We want to leave the current sexually explicit policy in place. It's more than sufficient. We want you to put more of your energy into ensuring that all Orange County Public School Systems students are recognized, accepted, and protected both physically and emotionally. For, for all of you, for who they are and how they identify, let us be great. We are OC. We want you to put more of your energy into improving the CTE program which is critical for the success of Orange County Public Schools. Put more of your energy into securing a property as close to the high school as you can. Let us be great. We are OC. We have to come together. We all have to respect and represent the different faiths, beliefs, and orientations that make up our amazing and diverse community. Let us all be great. We are OC. There is real work to be done. There are real issues to be addressed. Let us all be great. We are all OC. We can do anything if we come together. We can all work together to make public education in Orange County great. It's going to take all of us coming together, all of us having uncomfortable conversations, all of us listening, truly listening to the people we don't agree with. School Board members, you can start this process tonight. Sherry, Jen, ask yourselves, what would Judy Carter do?
Hello, and I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've come here as a student, I've come here as a member of the Orange County community, and I've come here as a voice of motivation and time after time, certain members of the School Board have brazenly served their own interests rather than the interests of the students of Orange County. Ms. Quinturn's sexually explicit resolution is frivolous as we already have a policy in place that prohibits inappropriate material. In the recent governor's policy, the definition of sexually explicit material is completely different than that, yeah, sorry, that is completely different than the definitions used in Ms. Quinturn's resolution. In the governor's policy, there is no mention of gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or correlations with mental health. The fact that this board has the audacity to believe that gender and orientation is somehow sexually explicit is grossly unfounded and has no academic proof and seems to be more based in ignorance than anything else. I urge this board to do what our teachers ask us to do as students, to research terms we use, to find scholarly sources, and to make factual-based arguments. This is the fundament, this is the foundation, sorry, this is the fundament, sorry. This is the foundation of a good education and one that our board needs to also do before proposing harmful and inaccurate resolutions. This resolution is not only academically unfounded but will only create more pain and division within our community, within our homes, and within our schools. And I still have a minute and thirty seconds, so I'm going to say one thing. It saddens me to be in a community in which hatred can take hold, but I truly know that we will rise above this and we will all be together because that is what triumphs over hatred. Love, love triumphs. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Thomas Corin, Alan Daniel, and Sarah Yeager.
Good evening. My name is Tom Corin, I live in Unionville. My wife and I relocated from California ten years ago and bought a home in Unionville. I'm here to show my support this evening for Chelsea's referendum to go along with what the state wants us to do. And the state could probably make us do it even though the board might disapprove of it this time. One thing that I've been to the last four or five meetings that I've been really disappointed in is the lack of trust and respect that other people have for our opinions and I'm holding myself in that same category. I've been guilty of that also. I think we have to show more respect for our board, for the people in the audience, and people have different views than we agree with. I have a sad story, I have a son that's gay, he married his partner, they have three vibrational children. I haven't talked to that young man in seven years. I do not agree with the lifestyle and he tried to shove it down our throat. Many arguments, many loud voices, a lot of insinuations against my wife and I and I don't have to accept it. I closed the door, I respect his desire to be, live that lifestyle, but I cannot accept that lifestyle. I'm sorry, I love the kid. If he called up today and wanted help, I'd help him, just as anybody in this audience yelled out "help" we'd all probably offer to help. Thank you, have a good evening.
Good evening Superintendent Corin, School Board members. My name is Alan and my pronouns are E.M. and I wanted to address Quinturn's resolution and the twenty-two model policies recently published by the VDOE. I would like to clarify that this is different from Dr. Orin's proposed IA, I, sorry, IIA policies dealing with explicit content in the classroom listed in tonight's agenda. I accept his, but I reject the other two as they are both transphobic and homophobic. As for Quinturn's resolutions and the VDOE model policies, I would argue that the board, I would urge the board to reject these as they are harmful to students and the community. I know we may hear from some claiming parental rights in support of the VDOE policies and Quinturn's resolution, but there is a commonly held legal notion that your rights end when they infringe on someone else's. None of what the cases that Ms. Quinturn stated for legal support, none of the cases Ms. Quinturn stated shows legal support for outing a child. The Supreme Court has always supported student rights and in nineteen sixty-nine case, Tinker versus Des Moines, they determined that the students don't shed their rights at the schoolhouse gates. The VDOE policy and Quinturn's resolution also violates the Human Rights Act which provides protections to a long list of groups including sexual orientation and gender identity, two groups that they attack. Additionally, it has been found that sexual orientation and gender identity are protected under Titles VII and IX. There's more, like the executive order fourteen zero twenty-one. I'd only have three minutes to talk and I want to talk about some other numbers. Did you know that in twenty twenty-one, that in a twenty twenty-one poll by the Morning Consult, they found that eighty-five percent of transgender non-binary youth and sixty-six percent of LGBTQ plus youth say that debates around anti-trans bills have negatively affected mental health? Twenty twenty-one was a record year for anti-trans bills as of the time of the poll. The Trevor Project ran a survey on LGBTQ mental health and they found that in the last three years, the occurrence of suicidal thoughts have increased in LGBTQ plus, LGBTQ plus youth with a direct correlation with anti-LGBTQ plus policies. The survey also found that forty-five percent of LGBTQ plus youth seriously thought about committing suicide. Mr. Hopkins previously reached out to me on how to combat suicide among the LGBTQ. I will state here just what I shared with him. Acceptance, yes, he said acceptance. The Trevor Project, as well as the CDC shows, forty percent decrease in suicidal attempts with at least one accepting adult. Fifty percent decrease in suicidal attempts if their preferred pronouns are actually respected. There's a direct correlation between mental harm and non-accepting policies. So please, think of the children. Accepting an LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus child does not take away from another child. A parent doesn't know their child enough to tell who they are, LGBTQ or not, that's on the parent, it's not the school's responsibility to tell them.
Thank you Superintendent Corin and School Board members for listening with open minds to all the speakers tonight. I hope you will take to heart the messages you hear, truly take all of them to heart, and act based on your constituents' wishes that are in the best interest of all our children, educators, and community. At the last meeting, Ms. Anderson proposed further burdening OCH staff with the task of presenting the curricula for all schools and grade levels to the board before the start of each school year or board member's tenure. While it is important for School Board members to be fully informed on the curricula, the onus should be on the board members themselves to familiarize themselves with all SOL standards and school curricula as that is your elected duty. And the information is already publicly available. As suggested by Ms. Page, independent research and annual review of curricula with the superintendent should be sufficient. With OCH currently listing thirty-seven employment vacancies, how do you expect redundant and unnecessary added work will affect the already overburdened and undercompensated school staff? The School Board seems more concerned with over-regulating social-political issues in public schools rather than engendering a supportive, inclusive, and attractive sense of community that retains qualified staff and best nurtures the education of our children. Ms. Anderson suggested the School Board should have final control over Orange County Public School curricula. It appears very biased and self-serving for this School Board to deem itself a better authority on curricula than the Virginia Department of Education. How many on this board have a master's in curriculum and instruction? The Virginia Department of Education's curricular framework is explicitly intended to best prepare students for the Virginia SOLs. If the School Board is allowed to arbitrarily reject SOL material it deems divisive or sexually explicit based on their religious or political beliefs, how do you think SOL scores will be affected? And as a result, school accreditation which determines federal funding. My plea to this School Board is to pull back from this fear-based political divisiveness and refocus on improving the quality of education and inclusive climate of Orange County schools. Please provide improved support and compensation of quality educators so that we may attract and retain them. Show your commitment to community building and camaraderie by opening dialogues between administrators, educators, parents, community members, and students. We need to be able to trust that you truly show equal support to all students including minority and marginalized groups. Please show your constituents that you're actually listening to our voices. Reject the wording of Ms. Quinturn's resolutions tonight to show that you truly care about the arbiters of our future, our children, more than you care about your partisan political machinations. machinations.
The next three speakers are Jamie Latham, Laura Daniel, and Darlene Dawson.
OC already has a sexually explicit materials policy in place that requires parental notification. I have no issues with current policy, however, oppose Quinton's resolution. The court cases cited in Quinton's latest draft establish parental rights exist. She failed to include cases where parents tried to control curriculum. Beginning in the nineteen eighties, federal court cases began making clear that the Meyer-Pierce doctrine, which asserts that parents have fundamental right to control the upbringing of their own children, does not extend to a parental right to control curriculum in the school. Blau v. Fort Thomas Public School District, two thousand and five. The U.S. Supreme Court has recognized a fundamental right of parents to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. And while this right plainly extends to the public school setting, it is not an unqualified right. While parents have a fundamental right to decide whether to send their children to public school, they do not have a fundamental right to generally direct how a public school teaches their child. Lee v. Reed Harrington, two thousand and three. Meyer-Pierce and their progeny do not begin to suggest the existence of a fundamental, sorry, the existence of LGBTQ, uh, let's see, I'm sorry, I've got a pop-up. The existence of a fundamental right of every parent to tell a public school what his or her child will and will not be taught. This is a public school setting. Your task with educating our children, not limiting their curriculum based on concepts some religions or people find objectionable or divisive. If parents want their children sheltered from the very existence of LGBTQI people or parts of U.S. history where people of color were treated horrifically, the court cases Quinton quotes show they have a right to homeschool their children, not dictate public school curriculum. Heterosexism is defined as the oppression of LGBTQI individuals involving prejudice and discriminatory behavior. One of the most devastating mental health consequences of it among many LGBTQI individuals is oppression and suicide. They have a significantly higher number of past suicidal thoughts and attempts than their heterosexual peers, often attributed to growing up hearing negative messages. This resolution states no students will be subjected to materials that include gender or sexual identity. Literature and history are filled with them. If there's a husband and his wife, there's your forbidden topic. Descriptions of how a character dresses or a child plays, there it is again. He, she, guess you better stick with they, them. Every single person has these identities, or do you just mean non-conforming ones? If so, that's heterosexism. By the way, I pulled that information from grad school textbooks. What fashion of liberal nonsense was teaching this, you ask? Liberty University. Lastly, the parental notification requirement is not in keeping with best practices. Children in OC should not be subjected to policies likely to increase suicide and depression among LGBTQI students. At the very least, parents should have the right to protect their children's mental well-being by opting out of this notification, thus granting access to counselors and other trusted adults while maintaining children's privacy. This would not help the students who most need protection. However, no parent should be forced into a policy that raises the chances of their student dying. If it's really about parental rights, I look forward to Quinton's resolution.
Good evening. As if there's any doubt, I strongly oppose Mr. Quinton's resolution, but I would like to tell you a story first. About a year ago, we were out visiting colleges. We just happened to visit one out of state. As we were driving around the town taking it in, we drove by a school that had a Black Lives Matter flag flying from outside the school. The next day, we met up with an old friend, someone who actually grew up in Orange County. I commented to him that I couldn't believe that there were so many pride flags flying around and so many Black Lives Matter signs up in the signs of, up in the windows of businesses all around, and that I had even saw a Black Lives Matter flag flying from a private school. That's when he corrected me and said it was a public school. He stated that just because there's differences in political views, at the end of the day, they treat each other with respect and they are an accepting community. They created an inclusive community, something that Orange County is clearly struggling with. So I've recently been asked, where do we go from here? And how do we bridge this divide of such, such hatred? We can do it by being like the other community. We can do it by stopping to pass these hateful resolutions brought forth by Mr. Quinton. This resolution is not about parental rights of our kids, and if they're exposed to sexually explicit material, we already have a policy in place for that. Our kids are not exposed to sexually explicit materials. But just because Mr. Quinton added a few obscured case laws, that doesn't change the heart of this resolution. As I stated before, Mr. Quinton, Mr. Anderson, and Mrs. Hopkins don't care that we already have these policies in place, and no, our kids are not exposed to pornographic material that Mr. Anderson would like our parents to think. Instead, this resolution is pushing to spread their hate and their fear of the LGBTQ plus community. They're doing so in isolating our kids. They're telling that group that they're not worthy and they're not wanted in our schools, but nothing could be further from the truth. They are worthy. You are wanted, and you are allowed to be your authentic true self. But if Mr. Quinton, Mr. Anderson, and Mrs. Hopkins would like to continue to push their conservative political and narrow religious views on all of our kids, then perhaps they should remove themselves from the board and join a board for a private religious school where you can feel free to run with those thoughts. But this school board is a public school board, meant to serve all students from all different backgrounds, all different religions, all different sexualities, and all different orientations. And if you didn't like my use of your pronouns, then that's what this is all about.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Horne. My name is Darlene Dawson. I've lived in Orange County for six years, and I have school-aged grandchildren in the county. I am also a retired Virginia public school educator, having served in the classroom for thirty-four years in Northern Virginia jurisdiction. What I recall from my years in the classroom is that no matter the issue that arose with any of my students, be it discipline, be it grades, be it field trip permissions, permissions to show a movie, permission to give an aspirin, the first thing an administrator would say to me is, "Have you contacted the parents?" Was always the first thing they ask, rightly so. It has long been enshrined in practice and in law that parents have the primary responsibility for the care, education, and upbringing of their children, and that's from the United States Constitution down to the Virginia Constitution, federal law, state law, and recent case law, and I know others are gonna reference all of those cases. I won't take the time to do that. This resolution simply affirms that Orange County is in compliance with what is already the law. Those who support this resolution and the VDOE policy are not haters. We're not bigots. We're not transphobic. We're not all the other ugly names that we get called. We don't want kids to die. We don't want kids to become suicidal. On the contrary, it's our love for all the students that compel us to speak up. If our transgender students continue to the ultimate step of a physical transition, then they are looking at a lifetime of major health implications. Drugs, surgeries, mental and physical health concerns for the rest of their lives. Will you, the school division, be there to pay those medical bills and offer the lifetime of support that will be necessary? Are you the ones providing by law health insurance until the age of twenty-six? No, it won't be you. It will be us. We will be the ones left to deal with long-term implications, including what has become an unmentionable, and that's the mental distress and regret of those who wish they had never embarked on a transgender journey and would like to reverse it. We, their families, have them from birth until death, while you have to teach, not to raise, for just a handful of years. You are hired by us, the Virginia taxpayers, to teach content, math, science, English, reading, the arts, and the list goes on. It far exceeds your role and responsibility to withhold information about our children from us. It's immoral and it's unethical for you to do so. We are not co-parents with you. This policy is fair, it's even-handed, it respects the rights of all students, and places parents in their rightful role and government employees in their limited role. Please vote to approve this common sense and lawful resolution. I thank you, Ms. Quinton, for presenting it, and I thank you, board members, for your service to Orange County.
The next three speakers are William Daniel, Matthew Collier, and Kylie Mills.
I'm here to talk to you guys about how, like, you guys are putting forth these resolutions, and these resolutions aren't right. These resolutions should be at private schools instead of public schools where, like, the private schools can do basically whatever they want and teach whatever they want, but public schools, they need to teach these basic, like, math, reading, and et cetera. Like, they need to teach those basic skills so someone can go on in their life and get a good job so they can feed their future potential family and have a good life. But these resolutions are outing kids, and outing isn't like, it's, we, outing is to show, like, one of these people came up here and said that, something about outing, can't remember exactly what it was, but outing, like, we use it, the adjective outing, to show, like, to say, like, someone, basically telling someone else, like, someone finding out that someone is, like, of another sexuality of gen, or gender identity, and then letting, like, the parents of that kid know before the kid has actually felt safe enough to tell their own parents, because these kids don't feel safe enough to tell their own parents yet, and so they're not ready to tell you, and that's why they haven't told you. So by outing them, you're like, basically, you're rushing through, like, them trying to get, like, they're trying to feel safe enough to tell you, like, how they feel, but they don't feel safe enough. So, like, they have to, like, they have to wait, and they need to develop more so they're ready, like, as a human being to let you know, but they're not ready at that time. And that's why you don't know, like, if your kid is trans already.
Yes, um, let's entertain a five-minute recess while we get this, um, a chance to, um, So, we'll just, um...
I was so excited for you, and by now, I was trying to get everything in this room. I was trying to ask, and then ask when they're going to be back there.
Are you ready?
No.
I think I would just, um, maybe.
And then, okay. Okay. Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Signed up today to speak on a different topic. My name is Matthew Collier. I am a science teacher at Gossbeck Heights Elementary School, and I'm here to address the use of animals in the classroom. I look at the board's current policies in regards to this, and the only thing I have found so far was policy KKA and policy KKAR, which deal with service animals. I would like to ask the board put into place either a policy that addresses animals in the classrooms or makes either an amendment to it to allow for teachers to bring animals into the classroom if they have met state requirements and if they serve a purpose either socially or educationally. There are some concerns. One of the big ones would be salmonella. According to the Center for Disease Control, it is highly unlikely this would be a possibility of reptiles in the classroom. It has only been documented in infants or citizens over sixty-five years of age. Also, according to Humane Society, it's only when there's contact with the animal matter. If there's just contact with the animal, the student would have to put it directly in their mouth. Biting would also be an issue, but again, if the person knows how to do that and have parental consent, I don't feel that it would be a liability. Also, it's safe any of the cages come equipped that they are, it would be locked. The benefits, I do feel, greatly outweigh these risks. They encourage responsibility and leadership and empathy in the classroom. They provide a sense of security and community. They enhance science lessons, and they enhance behavior. I have used them in my class to establish relationships with students. I have used them in a variety of science lessons for measurements, genetics, and cellular reproduction. I think it is a valuable tool for educators to have, so I request that you would address this issue. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Heather Nelson. I'm eleven years old and in the fifth grade. I'm a student at Lucas Grove Elementary. I'm here to speak about the resolution regarding sexually explicit materials. I believe this resolution will be harmful to the students in the school district if passed. I believe the school board should be spending their time fixing problems that already exist in our schools, not creating one. As a student, I believe we should be making all children feel safer, not making the LGBTQ plus children feel unwelcome and/or targeted. It's a teacher's job to make the student feel safe and welcome. By obligating the teacher to out their student to the parent, you would be making those children feel unsafe, unwelcome, and not free to be themselves. If you let this rule pass, the suicide rate will likely go up in our area, and that will be your fault. As an eleven-year-old, when I'm hanging out with my friend who identifies as gay, I'm not thinking about their sexual orientation. We shouldn't be thinking about this topic. We shouldn't be talking about this topic because we shouldn't care. Let a child identify as what they want. By doing this, children who are not ready to come out to their parents will feel scared. School is supposed to be a safe learning environment. School is supposed to be a safe learning environment. How does this help a child's learning?
The next three speakers are Megan Whitney, Dwayne Pugh, and Brittany Alexander.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a parent of two children in OCPS and as a mental health professional who specializes in treating children and adolescents, I remain deeply concerned about this board's willingness to adopt policies that discriminate against young people who don't look like or think like you. Earlier this year, you targeted racial and LGBTQ+ minorities by passing the divisive content resolution. Now, tonight, you're considering the sexually explicit materials resolution, which imagines a national crisis in order to place new and life-threatening burdens on our LGBTQ+ community, both children and teachers. As a parent, I think we can all agree that sexually explicit material should not be given to our children at school without our permission. However, the fact that this resolution includes sexual orientation and gender identity with sexually explicit material alarms me about the message you're sending children. This type of language directly targets the LGBTQ+ students. By definition, the term sexual orientation includes heterosexual and gender identity includes sex assigned at birth. But we all know that you aren't requiring that teachers request permission to use sex assigned at birth pronouns and to speak about heterosexual relationships in the classroom or to out cisgendered heterosexual students to their parents. As I said before, I'm a parent of two children in OCPS. Never once have they come home and reported feeling uncomfortable, unsafe, or upset in any way about a student who identifies as LGBTQ+. What they have come home concerned about is school safety, unsafe building conditions, overcrowding, and teacher shortages. The sexual identity of their classmates is not an issue for them. We teach our children from a very early age to be themselves. We tell them, people should like you just the way you are. This resolution is telling children it's only okay to be themselves if they're heterosexual. It dictates that LGBTQ+ students and teachers must hide who they are because their gender identity or sexual orientation might be a threat to someone. I would ask each one of you to consider the purpose of this resolution. What problem are you trying to solve? What harm will this come to if not passed? Or conversely, what problems will this resolution create and what harm will cause? I can assure you, as a mental health professional, lives will literally be at risk if this is adopted. That's not hyperbole, it's a conclusion that's supported by statistical data. Even if you're just saving one life of a child by saying no, isn't it worth it? This school board cannot pass enough resolutions to remake the world to be entirely Christian and white.
As already been said, my name is Dwayne Pugh, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak. Report cards, physical forms to participate in athletics, field trips to be registered in any school in Orange County, random drug tips if a student is involved in a fight at school. The school system requires the involvement of the parent in those situations at school. PTA meetings, parent-teacher conferences, booster clubs. These are all things that the school system invites the parents to be involved in the life of the child that's at the school because you understand that as a general rule, when the parents are involved and active in the life of the student, as a general rule, their grades are better and there's least fewer behavioral problems. Because of the success of this longstanding philosophy, the question needs to be asked and why are we considering altering that? And I understand that one of the main reasons is given is because of fear for the safety of the young person, abuse at home, or that type of thing. And I care deeply about the young people in Orange County, and I don't want to see any of them in any type of abusive situation. But there are laws on the books that if correctly applied and correctly understood would address these issues. I believe that there is a concerted effort to propagate the idea in this country that government and schools are a superior way to educate children instead of parents. And what I would encourage you to do if you believe that, to state that plainly and proudly if that is your belief, so that in the next election cycle, should you choose to run again, people can understand that a vote for you would be a vote for them advocating their primary responsibility to educate the child and to take care of their well-being as they grow up. I personally believe that this philosophy is something that will be detrimental. I close with a lesson from history and current things that are happening around the world. Any religious institution, any government, any other organization that takes the responsibility away from the parents to begin to mold and educate the child in the is pushing some type of an agenda that they want the society to adopt, and it is no friend of the society or or the people that they're trying to protect. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Brittany Alexander. I don't like to speak publicly. Originally, when I thought I would speak before you all before tonight's meeting, I had written up a nice little speech, as a lot of other people have done, but I figured I would just come and maybe tonight. So I think it's appropriate as we're all talking about equality and all of these proposals you're addressing. You had one passed before, and it's ironic that we have so many people here talking about equity and everyone being on the same basic human rights level, whatever you want to call it, yet a lot of black people don't even put into equality groups. So that's kind of ironic to me. I have a daughter. A lot of you know, I've been in Orange County all my life. If you've been here for a long time, you probably know my father, and he'd probably be disappointed in me addressing anything or being standing up here to say anything against what I believe, because he would always just tell me to ignore ignorance. But I'm up here, I have four daughters who have grown through the system. This will be the last year that I ever have a child attend Orange County Public Schools. My daughter comes home, she doesn't, she's not a coon, a nigger, or a monkey, yet that's what she's called constantly every day at school. What I find ironic is that I've had to teach her to turn the other cheek, to ignore what people say, yet statistically, as all of you who sure know, white people and their children have the highest rates of using and overdosing on drugs. Most of them in their therapy sessions will say, oh, because I heard this, my mom didn't love me growing up, I wasn't treated right, that sort of thing. Yet you tell my black children to ignore the ignorance. Tell your own that. I'm literally tired of having to make sure my child is okay every day because she has to deal with the racism that goes on in your county. It's disgusting. Yet most of you sit here and say it doesn't exist. Well, are any of you black? The majority of this room is white. So would your child come home and say they were called a coon or a nigger or a monkey? I don't think so. And that's disgusting that you sit here and act like it doesn't exist and have done nothing. I've met with school board members since elementary school. I've met with assistant principals, principals, I've met with anybody that I can, and that's why I stand here today. Maybe you'll do something about it at some point instead of sitting here trying to push things that don't, we don't even need. Why don't you start working in the classroom to figure out what the problems are? I have a child that doesn't want to go to school because she hates to come, because she's sitting at a pep rally with three kids yelling nigger behind her while she's sitting there trying to enjoy the pep rally. Meanwhile, the game later that day, because she did report it, and it was known that she did, she was called a dumb bitch at the football game later for standing up to your kids who are consistently calling her names. Maybe because of everything we sit here and talk about, especially tonight, if I tell you that my daughters do not identify as niggers, maybe you'll do something about it then because they don't.
The next three speakers are Dalton Anglin, Catherine Hamilton, and Cameron Hamilton.
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm actually here in support of the resolution that has been passed, and I believe you also received a copy of the support of Bryce Reeves from the Senate, and I'd like to read that. Says Chairman Page, members of the Orange County School Board, "A multitude of my constituents have reached out to me in support of your colleague, Ms. Quinter's resolution relating to sexually explicit content in Orange County public schools. I would encourage all of you to follow Virginia law when considering this resolution. As stated within Ms. Quinter's resolutions, parents have the fundamental right to care, upbringing, and education of their children. Not only should this truth be self-evident, but it has been a part of the Virginia Code since I carried it and passed State Bill 908 back in 2013. I only ask that you give careful consideration to the contents of Ms. Quinter's resolution and to the opinion of those you represent. Written notification of sexually explicit content provided to parents is already a requirement with the passage of State Bill 656 during the 2022 legislative session, and school boards must adopt policy to comply before January 1st, 2023. These requirements include notifying parents of explicit content, identifying the sexually explicit content up for parents, allowing the parents to review the content, and providing an alternative, non-explicit explicit option for students whose parents deem the content to be inappropriate for their child. Thank you Chairman Page and other board members for taking your time to read this letter as you deliberate this Quinter's proposed resolution. Again, I simply ask that the Virginia Code is upheld to the highest standard within Orange County. Thank you for your consideration and understanding. Senator Bryce Reeves, 17th Centorial District of Virginia." And I'd also like to recognize that Mr. Nick Swedish is here tonight, and we appreciate his support. All things tonight have been discussed, in respect to law, to code, to what's right. Schools need to get back to educating and at the basis because people are not learning at the level they need to. The people today quite frequently aren't scoring as high as the kids of twenty years ago. Why is that? In large part, because they need to. We need critical thinking, and this policy has been critically thought about. How about a show of hands for who supports Ms. Quinter's resolution tonight? I'd say that's one and a half around.
He gave us like a date to sign up.
Cameron, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for everyone for listening here. I appreciate the respect everybody's given to the board, and the most part it's been very nice to see you just to discuss. I support this resolution from Mrs. Quinter.
Speak into the mic.
And compliance with the Code of Virginia, Section 1-240.1, which states that a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of their parent's child. Thank you, Mrs. Quinter, for your willingness to put this forward in order to protect the welfare of the youth of Orange County and the rights of parents to address issues of mental health for their child. It is my hope that the entire school board will vote in support of this resolution.
Cameron Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll be okay. I want to appreciate you giving me the time to speak here, also to the board. Thank you again for your willingness to listen to public comment. So my name is Cameron Hamilton. Been a public servant for roughly seventeen years, both in the military as well as federal government. And I just want to attest my perspective on this matter as a public servant and as someone who has risked his life overseas to defend the rights and liberties of this country. Really, the Supreme Court has attested throughout the various years that there is a fundamental right that parents do have to the upbringing and the actual raising of their children. And so as a society now, we are faced at a very strange crossroads where a state board or a school board or a state government, or really a government in general, is considering the possibility of usurping their authority to supersede that of a parent. That is quite a significant undertaking. Again, as eloquently demonstrated earlier, I think there's plenty of background and precedent showing that the wise and diligent thing to do is to have parental involvement in matters of this child, especially matters that pertain towards their health, their identity, discussion of sexually explicit materials. So I do support the resolution that's been brought forth by Ms. Quinter, and I do want to thank you for doing that. Really, let me ask a question as a civic member of society in general. What rights and authorities have we absconded and have we really seceded to the state, to the school board? And I would argue that we live in a society where there is a social contract, and I don't believe that the authorities that parents have in the lives of their children have to be oppressive, to be supportive, and to show our love and sincere support of our child by allowing them to thrive. That right and authority has not been given to the state board, in my opinion. So I believe that supporting this matter today, I think, would be in good standing. There's many precedents that have already been argued before the Supreme Court. The notion that government power should supersede parental authority has been very, very narrowly argued and upheld. And again, the circumstances are in matters of abuse or extreme neglect. So my argument here about the social outing of children, I understand the implications, but this is not a school board's social outing of a child. This is a child choosing to disclose a matter pertaining towards great health implications of their life or great decisions of their life that should be consulted with the parents because again, there are far-reaching consequences to decisions like that. A brief summary, again, the Fourteenth Amendment does forbid the government to infringe except for in very limited circumstances about liberty. There's Pierceley Society of Sisters, Meyer versus State of Nebraska, Prince versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Wisconsin v. Yoder. We have various others. Cleveland Board of Education versus v. LaFleur, Moore versus Eves-Cleveland, Harren versus JR, Reno versus Flores, Washington v. Schlittberg, just a variety of here that set a precedent. Thank you for your time.
The next three speakers are Donna Pugh, Patty Lumston, and John Ford.
Hello, my name is Donna Pugh. I moved from Georgia to Orange when I was in the sixth grade. I graduated from Orange County High School in 1977. I married a North Carolina boy and lived there for fourteen years, but twenty-eight years ago, I came full circle and moved back to Orange when God called my husband to pastor a church here in Orange. We have seen all four of our children graduate from Orange County High School. Believe me when I say, we have invested our lives in these schools and in this county. My husband and I have been school bus drivers, and he coached soccer for over twenty years. I can't begin to tell you how many hours I have sat on the sidelines or in the bleachers cheering on my children in their orange and blue. Throughout those years, I made it a point to go meet every single teacher my children had, and rarely did I ever miss a parent-teacher conference. I always made it a point to thank each one of them for their hard work and sacrifice. I believe they are the most overworked and underpaid people in our nation, but that's for another board meeting. So why am I here tonight? You might say I have no business or concerns in the schools anymore, but you would be wrong. I have five grandchildren and dozens of children in our church family. I believe every child is a gift from God, and He gave them to their specific mother and father. For me, I took my job as mother to my four children seriously. It has been the hardest job I've ever had, and I've had plenty of mistakes along the way, but it's also been the most important and rewarding job I've ever had. But I am the parent, not the school or the government on the local or national level. If I had a sign tonight, it would read, "Parents over policy, period." I would encourage everyone on this board tonight to vote yes on the resolution to always keep parents informed and never try to overstep parental consent by pushing any agenda without their knowledge. Education should be a team effort. The parents plus the teacher plus administration working together to help each student be a success inside and outside of the classroom.
Patty Lumston.
Good evening. I've been up here in the last several public speaking, so I won't repeat myself. I have one remaining child in the school district. This is my last year, and I'm up here to represent all the children. I can tell you for sure that my children will not continue to live in this county. And in fact, they're very anxious to get on the way to somewhere else. But I do live here, and I wanted to share a little bit about my experience in my life in the world outside of Orange County. I work for SMP Global. We celebrate pride, we celebrate diversity, we celebrate inclusion. SMP Global, SMP stands for Standards and Poor, is a global company with over forty thousand employees globally, across the world. That's more than the number of people in this county. And as a company, we embrace the differences in others. We celebrate them. We have employee resource groups that help and support our individuals, no matter what their race, religion, color, sexual orientation, gender orientation. We have training. We are required to sign Code of Business Ethics. We are required to take training, to be accepting, to be diverse. It makes us stronger. It makes us accepting. It makes us, it makes a difference. Sexual orientation and gender identification are not sexually explicit subjects, and I request that it be stricken from the resolution. I also recommend that the statement, "Including but not limited to self-identification," be removed. Self-identification means how a person identifies. It's not necessarily their gender or their sexual orientation. It's who they are. I'm a mom. I'm female. I'm a software developer. I'm a director. I'm a manager. I'm an Orange County employee. I'm a sister. I'm a chubby, middle-aged woman. That's how I self-identify. It is much more than just what you have on this resolution, and it needs to be stricken. The school board here, of all the people, should understand how harmful and hateful people can be. I'm sure you get calls, you have regular communications, and you get emails from hateful people. Don't let our children be exposed to those hateful people.
John Ford.
John Ford. As a parent of schoolchildren, I feel particularly qualified to speak here. As a cisgender male, I was born a boy, I identify as a man, and a Christian, I feel obligated to speak against this "Don't say gay except to out people" resolution. Its existence will make life difficult for vulnerable young people. It begins by asking us to join in a national culture war. It goes on to equate mere discussion of sexual orientation or gender identity with sexually explicit material, with pornography. Nobody catches gayness or a new gender identity by reading or talking about it. We all know this. But this resolution seeks to push people back in the closet, to shut them up so they don't show up in the statistics. Trust parents to do their job as parents, to love and care for their children, not cut them off. To people, to board members, to parents who say you need this resolution, what are you afraid of? Is your biggest worry that you might have a gay child?
The next three speakers are Dwight Boston, Liberty Chavez, and Emily Peddwell-Chile.
I'm Dwight Boston. I'm a retired licensed clinical social worker. In my years as a mental health therapist, I dealt extensively with teenagers, counseled hundreds who were suicidal. Also during my time with Community Services Board in this county and others, I evaluated countless others to decide on involuntary hospitalizations at such times. I mention this because a number of people today and other days have claimed that if you give certain information about kids to their parents, it could lead to the child becoming suicidal. While that's a possibility, it is no different than a teen becoming distraught because the parent finds out about substance abuse or about failing grades. But so far, nobody is suggesting the schools withhold bad grades from parents. On the other side of this coin is the high suicide rate to those who have permanently mutilated their bodies and have realized that surgery and hormones did not resolve their inner conflicts. Parents should be given the information they need to help their children deal with their struggles and not be left in the dark. As a person who identifies as an Orange County taxpayer and voter, I ask that you approve the resolution regarding parental notification and the rest of the common sense measures already included with it. Thank you.
Liberty Chavez.
As a student at Orange County High School, I am once again here to tell you to vote no for the sexually explicit content resolution. The past few times I have spoken, I have been very respectful towards you all, and now my patience is wearing thin. Chelsea Quintern has sat on her high horse, looking down her nose at all of us who dare to go against Her Majesty. All of these board members have sat there and watched people cry and begging them to not pass this, and only two of you have shown any empathy. Mr. Jones and Ms. Page are the only ones who seem to actually care about our feelings and what we are saying, while the rest of you sit there with a blank stare as if you are looking through us like we don't exist. I'm not ignorant to what is going on in the world around me, and this on top of what the governor is trying to do is dangerous. This will cause problems at school. I won't feel safe, and neither will my friends. Other people, ignorant people, will take this as a chance to call people in the LGBTQ community at the high school, specifically slurs like "faggot", but the high school is already horrible with handling this kind of stuff. My friend was walking to the bus and got called a "faggot". They said there hasn't been a day while he was at school, for at least a month, that he hasn't been called that. My other friend in the parking lot of Porterfield Park was just walking when someone yelled out "faggot". Teachers were around, and they did nothing about it. I know friends who have plans for if they get outed to their parents. You aren't protecting us in any way. If any of my friends or I gets called a homophobic slur, I will not hesitate to stand up for them, and I will most definitely stand up for myself. And if I stand up to someone who is ignorant, I promise you, it will not be pretty, because I will not let my friends become a statistic, like my brother's friend, who did when he decided to jump in front of a train because he was getting outed to his parents. And yes, he was outed to his parents. Outing is a thing. This was never an issue until politics got involved a few years ago. Public schools mean everyone, not just the select few that fit into your idea of it. Our lives are not sexually explicit.
Hello. Hello, school board members and members of the board. My name is Emily Peddwell-Chile, and I am currently a senior at our high school, which means that as a student, the policies that you pass do directly impact me and my friends. I am here tonight, among others, to urge you to vote no on your proposed sexually explicit materials resolution, which you have been putting off for months. At each of these meetings, we beg you to dispose of this resolution. We show you that we're emotionally distraught over the harm that this resolution could cause, and with the exception of Ms. Page and Mr. Jones, at least previously. The rest of you refuse to step off of your pedestal and listen to our pleas. Ms. Quinter, you refuse to even look at the faces of the students whose lives you are impacting with this resolution. I would like to give you a few statistics. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death between youth aged ten to twenty-four. Yes, as young as ten. Of these, LGBTQ plus youth are among the highest efforts. The students who will be outed to their homophobic parents in a rural area will most likely become part of this statistic because of your proposed policy. Additionally, a third of LGBTQ undergraduate college students reported being harassed for their sexuality. These are the people who are in the same generation as our current high school students, so they share very similar experiences. Of my friends who identify as a sexuality other than straight or a gender other than the sex that they were assigned at birth, I am told homophobic encounters that they've experienced every week. Your resolution prohibits discussion of different sexual orientations and gender identities other than the cisgender heterosexual identity that you all view as normal. Of course, your resolution says it will be all identity discussions that will not be allowed, but we all know that you are known to pick and choose what's allowed based on your own beliefs and ideals, even in a public school environment where everyone should be accepted. And finally, since many of you in support of this resolution like to use your religion to try and support your message of homophobia and bigotry, I would like to leave you with the Bible code from the Book of Colossians, a book providing the message of addressing problems within the church that challenges believers in Christ to look inward and be transformed through love. Chapter 3, verses 12 to 14. Therefore, as God's chosen people, holy and dearly loved, clothe yourselves with compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. Bear with each other and forgive one another if any of you has a grievance against someone. Forgive as the Lord forgave you. And over all these virtues, put on love, which binds them all together in perfect union. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Jade Leonard, Bob Potts, and Wes Young. Good luck. You're gonna do great. Jade Leonard.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay. So, my name is Bob Potts. My pronouns are they and them. The last few months, we, the citizens of Orange County, and parents and students alike, have been telling you this board has been opposed to the resolution. There's a lot of people here tonight that are telling you that they're for it. They haven't been here for the last three or four meetings since we first brought it up. I remember the first meeting that I came to when this was first brought up. There were kids all around that wall with transplanted. They were students. I didn't see any of you, maybe one or two of you. None of, there were a couple other people here. I didn't see a lot of others. There's a lot of things that I want to say. Obviously, I'm not going to have enough time, especially since I'm a little nervous because I hate talking, but this is getting me out of my comfort zone because it speaks to my heart. One of my children is a lesbian. She came out a couple months ago to me. I was first born, she came out to me. I have another child in the system who is non-binary. She came out to me before school. Do you know that in your registration, it has male, female, and non-binary? I click "non-binary" because that's what she is. She's either a boy or a girl, whichever day she decides she wants to be, she can be. Does it matter? No, it really doesn't. You guys are talking about bathrooms and how this person identifies, how that person identifies, and you're worried about it. You should be worried about the teachers that need equal pay. You should be worried about the shortage of bus drivers. You heard the bus driver, the administrator, the transportation guy today. You heard him. There's a shortage of bus drivers. You should be worried about that, not how a kid identifies. Not that, I mean, if a parent really loves their kid, they'll know it. They'll know that they're LGBT or how they identify. You people have been opposed to this. This is wrong, completely wrong. Thanks. Remember, my pronouns are they and them.
Greetings. It's past my bedtime, so I'm going to try to get through this as fast as I can. My name is Gordon Young, Wes Young. I represent FFM Academy and Exchange Life Counseling Center here in Locust Road. I've been working here for the past four years. I have a master's degree in counseling with over twenty years of experience teaching school and counseling. I also work with the James Stopson Institute. I'm concerned with the school board dictating policy and directing change for our children in sexual orientation. Our school board since its creation was designed to educate our children in academics. Sexual orientation should be left for parents and professionals that are trained in this area. The training that I was taught is being used in counseling centers all over the world. In the centers that I have run, we have had a success rate of ninety-five percent in freeing our clients, teens and adults, from drug reliance, addiction, and sexual perversion. There's a trigger that goes off inside of a small part of society that makes them seek a sexual orientation that's different from the one that they were born in. It can be from divorce, it can be from death, it could be from a simple breakup of a first love. Many things can trigger this. And we're not addressing the trigger point. I think that's one of the things that I am seeing that we don't really understand a lot of here tonight, is the educational part and what causes this. And covering up the problem is not a cure. We must address the problem to fix the cure. We need to help people by caring for them with their problem and bring their life back to normal. One side effect of gender change, which many people have brought out here tonight, is suicide. Our U.S. Department of Education is drawing attention around the world. For one thing, we have a statistic that about seventy to eighty percent of our fourth-grade class in English cannot pass the equivalency test. This week, President Vladimir Putin addressed the world, and he talked about the U.S. leading the West in satanic teachings. He talked about how school systems are teaching, encouraging, and aiding students in choosing sexual perversion, drugs, and body mutilation in the name of freedom and democracy. He said that the countries around the world need to ally and get behind the satanic regime. Our country is leading perversion in families, church, school, government. I don't believe that this is what our country should stand for. Freedom is what made this United States great, and we need the freedom and greatness to return. We need leaders with morals and sincere concern for our country. It's never too late to say that we've made an error. It is time to get back and get ready. Parents need to know what is going on in their children's lives. They are not old enough to make decisions that will change their life for eternity. And what's even more is that the responsibility of this lies on each one of you, not only as a board, but as individuals. Thank you.
The last two speakers are Mike Allers and John Patifless. Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. Hopefully you can hear me. I'm pretty loud. I want to hurt your hearing with speaking into the microphone. I want to applaud the fact that this was a very good discourse tonight. I really applaud that. The fact that people listen to each other, differing opinions, that's a wonderful thing. I want to recognize one of my former students, Jude, because he came up here with a message of love. And teaching him in fourth grade was a privilege. It's a privilege to see him as a young man. Thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
I'm a twenty-eight-year educator. I currently work in Gordon Barber. I'm privileged with working in Gordon Barber. I love my job. I don't love my penny, but we'll get into that some other time. I do love my job. It's a great job. I've been in education for twenty-eight years, about fourteen of those were in administration. And when I was in administration, one of the things I took to heart were the roles... And when I was in administration, one of the things I took to heart were the roles of the parent. Parents made me a successful administrator. One of the things I fought for constantly was the fact that we would have a hundred percent parent-teacher conference attendance. Not easy to do. You have four or five hundred parents, I mean, four or five hundred students, almost a thousand parents, getting them all in for a conference was difficult. But the value in that was the shared partnership we had with those parents. I'm all about transparency with the parents. I'm all about telling parents what I'm going to teach. Each Sunday night, I sit down and put out a long list, a laundry list, the things we're gonna talk about that week, what their children are going to learn, what we're going to discuss, the benefits of it, why is that important to your child, all those things, complete transparency. I bring parents in constantly to talk about their children. I would never think of anything else. The honesty and transparency I have with parents have made our little schooling, Gordon Barber, probably the most successful elementary school in this district. And it's because the two ladies I work with and myself exhaustively reach out to parents. We believe in parents. We cannot exist without parents being with us. Virginia Code says parents have the final say. There's a statement that says schools are in charge with a provision called in loco correntis. That means in place of parents, but it does not mean that we supplant parents. We are there to keep your kids safe, we are there to educate your child. I just come up with a hashtag that says just teach. I want to just teach the core content, the subject matter. I want children to grow up and be successful. I want them to be citizen actors like Jude decided to do tonight. I love them, but it's the just teaching and empowering the parents and informing the parents and being a hundred percent transparent that allow me to be successful personally and allow children in my charge to do the same as well.
Thank you very much, you're timed.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Allers. I'm a recent person who moved into Virginia. I come from Maryland. I wanted to say to the board that I support this moderate yet common resolution as supported by this board. Let me explain. One, this resolution supports the common best practices that are currently implemented in many districts throughout. One is right next door in Maryland. In Orange County Public Schools, that's a similar resolution, and best practice is already in place, and it's been in place for three decades. That informs parents who have sexually explicit material are being taught in their respective categories. When my son was enrolled in that system, I, as a parent, was received notice that sexually explicit material was being taught. I had the option to technically send in or out. To put the school system in perspective, the total student enrollment population in this school system is seventy-three thousand students in total. This is a socially, economically diverse county. Put it another way, there's only, it's about twice the size of Orange County's total population, and it works for them. Supporting this resolution would only put in line with neighboring school systems and with other systems throughout the country. Second, notifying parents of the well-being of a student, again, is common practice throughout the school systems in Maryland, as also around the country. Parents are notified when a student is involved in a physical altercation, behavioral incident, or a significant change in the student's mental or physical health. It's included hurting and to include harming themselves. When existence occurs, the school is obligated to act and must apply to parents. Finally, no school system or any government entity has dominion of any child. Students are not warts of the state or any other government entity unless it's been deemed legally declared by a court. Only parents have full dominion over their children. By acting in a deceitful manner and not telling parents that their child's potential mental or physical identification is wrong and violates natural parent rights that existed for over five thousand years, passing this moderate resolution, it symbolizes open, honest, and transparent dialogue between parents, students, and Orange County school officials. And will be in line with numerous school districts throughout the country at the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you.
At this time, I will close public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we're gonna have Mr. Hill, Director of Technology. He's here available to answer any questions for you. Uh, but he is here to present a recommendation for surplusing our previous Cisco phones. And Greg Hill, let's take your time.
Thank you. My name is Greg Hill. I'm the Director of Technology, and over the summer, we replaced our previous voice-over- IP system with new handsets. Consequently, we had the older equipment on hand, approximately seven hundred and twelve units. I'm asking that those be surplus so that we can turn those over for moderate remuneration that will be put back into technology funds for our students. Happy to answer any questions?
I think, Madam Chairman, this system that's in place here is probably, what, eleven, twelve years old?
Yes. It was due to be replaced, but we are actually able to get some funds back for it.
That was one of my first, I was, I was, I was, I was, so, um, I'd like to have a motion to entertain Mr. Hill's recommendation to turn this over to be able to hopefully prove something like this.
I'll make a motion that we accept this presented by Mr. Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the next two letters C and D were brought to you at the work session two weeks back. One is for your consideration of a fund transfer request to compensate for additional costs above and beyond for the Gordon Barber work. And Mr. Honnifer was here at that time. He's here, should you need him, but this is the request that was brought to you. We're looking for action now at the previous work session.
Are there any questions of Mr. Honnifer? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for this approval of transfer of funds.
Madam Chairman, I vote to approve the request to transfer two hundred and forty-one thousand eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents from the Fund Two Three Two One Capital Fund to the Fund One Three One Four Financial Capital Projects.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, last one, letter D, consideration of recommendations for award of a contract for children replacements at Locust Grove Elementary in Prospect Heights. Again, this was information that was brought forward at the previous work session. Mr. Arnold presented. He is here at the doorway, should you need him, but again, this is the information previously, now seeking action.
Are there any questions of Mr. Arnold? Okay. Hearing none, I'd add in a chain of motion to accept this award of contract for replacement.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the award of contract to train in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the replacement of the chillers at Locust Grove Elementary School and Prospect Heights Middle School.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second. All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. And at this time, I will defer to Mrs. Quinter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarity, I know there's some additions and modifications since we last brought this up in May. So, in blue is just some explanations, and that would not be part of the actual resolution. And there were some language that were stricken, and I also would like to amend where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved," the last line in that paragraph. Explicit subject without explicit consent from their parents. I would just like to change explicit to expressed, so that way it brings a little bit clearer. But after hearing a lot of comments tonight, I think we can all agree on multiple things. One, parents have a right to knowing what's going on with their children. The United States, the state of Virginia, and Orange County should make that known by passing this resolution. Second, mental health is paramount in our children. And if parents don't have access to the entire upbringing, education, wellness of their children, then we are doing all children a disservice by not allowing parents to have that information. And lastly, just the role of teachers. They're educators. We're not here to talk socially if you choose to do so. This resolution would be a statement that says, if you want to talk to students about social matters, then get the parent's permission. Otherwise, stick to teaching, stick to science, math, arithmetic, history, language, because beyond that, that's not your duty. That's the duty of the parent. So with that, I will be calling on all board members to respect the Supreme Court of the United States decisions, to respect the state of Virginia, and I also believe that our current Board of Education will be following through with policy, model policy, that also supports the statements in this resolution. So with that, Madam Chair, with the additional stricken explicit amendment to express consent, I move that we pass this resolution as presented.
Make a motion, then we open the floor for comment.
Okay. Is there a second to accept this? I would say I have a second. Okay, then it's open for discussion. Yes, you are.
Well, one thing I would like to say is, thanks, number one, Orange County has class. And the fact is, is that everybody has shown up, said what they wanted to say, nobody got off topic, they said their piece, they said what they wanted to say, and we've got to appreciate that. I think our founders would look at this and go, this works. It's supposed to work. It's not supposed to be, I like that, or I don't like that. We have something in the country called due process. We don't rush to judgment. We don't fail to exercise our logic. We weigh cases by every, every time. We, we put it out there. We, we make decisions based on rational exposure and experience and logic, again. Not everybody in America wakes up winning the parent lottery. If you don't know what the parent lottery is, I won it. My mom taught school for thirty-eight years. There's a lot of times that our clothes went to help kids that didn't have clothes. We didn't wear the best stuff, and she took money out of her pocket that came out of our, off our table to help. That was a choice, because with one hand you can hurt, with one hand you can love. Now, if you haven't ever expressed the parent lottery question, come talk to me anytime. I know September twenty-seventh, public comments opened, or started, and it's supposed to be weighed for responses to the upcoming additional guidance that we were given. But when Senate Bill Six Fifty-Six was written, the intent of it that I read was stakeholders are supposed to work together. You're supposed to come like we did tonight, you say your piece, you put it on the table, you listen to reason and logic, and you make the best decision. You know what I do for a living? I've worked more suicides than you could ever count. I've seen more dead bodies than you'll ever know in twenty-six years. I've smelled death, I've seen it, I don't like it. I've had to tell parents and loved ones that they're, they're not coming home. I was at Virginia Tech, I saw it. And all I would say is, is let's put value on life and use that due process. We have a bullying policy in place, and I recognize being under eighteen means PG. I don't know all of the answers. There's times that I got taken to the woodshed, there's times that I was explained, hey, this is probably the tracks you need to be on, son. When your dad's a drill instructor and your mom's a teacher, you kind of get the message. I watched a special on Sixty Minutes on May twenty-four, twenty-two, and one of the quotes that struck me was, we didn't get enough pushback on transitioning when people went a certain direction. And I think that every vehicle that you drive has an accelerator and has brakes. Otherwise, we run off the cliff, but we control that energy. Again, due process, being under eighteen means there is a legal age at which a person by law has to attain the capacity to engage in certain transactions. As young people, you're gonna be a consumer. You're gonna have to make your decisions. One day, you're gonna be taking care of me and wherever I end up. You think about those families that go home and they don't have that loved one to say, hey, you know, I see where you're coming from and I accept what you're doing. If you didn't know, also, I'm a parent. I have three children in the public schools, and also have the joy and happiness of living with a public school teacher in the system. So I know what she does every day. I don't want teachers' ears sewed to the carpet where they have no flexibility in navigating. I spoke to some other school board members in other counties to listen to what their ideas were. I know Dr. Hornick has put forth model policies based on what's coming down from the DOE. All I can say is, is that for my profession, that I sit in front of juries a lot, and I look at people, and I know people judge me and weigh me for who I am and what I stand for and what I believe in. So what fear, I knew the fear of this day would come, that I would have to be conflicted on weighing in on one side or the other. You got this side, you got that side. But the cost is, somebody could be sitting in a jury, just like I'm looking at you one day and I'm testifying, and they let a child molester or murderer, somebody go away and get off just because of bias, because they don't like me. So it may come as a weak knead and all that, but I can't serve two masters. The state police motto that I adhere to is without fear, favor, or prejudice. So while I see the merits in Mrs. Quinter's resolution, I also see some pitfalls because it can be loosely construed. Sometimes it's not as, language is interesting. You could create five problems out of one problem. So my answer tonight is, is I'm gonna abstain from voting because of a conflict. I'm not gonna vote on it.
And my stance is, while I think Chelsea, for the work that she put in on the resolution, and even after she went back, I will adhere to the policies that Dr. Hornick and our staff has put together, who I know is, everybody wanted us to follow the governor's lead, his executive orders and whatever, and this is what our policy that we will present tonight will do, is follow the governor's orders. So with that, I will not support this resolution, but I will support the policy that is coming forth from our administration.
Partly the reason we're here tonight is because back in April, when this resolution first was brought forward, we all knew that the General Assembly had passed a code that said that we were going to get a guidance from the Department of Education on sexually explicit content. We now have that guidance, and the next, the next item on the agenda, it's not titled that, but basically, that's exactly what And the next, the next item on the agenda, it's not titled that, but basically, that's exactly what it is. It's what's came down from the Department of Education on sexually explicit content. So it'd be redundant to pass this one and then pass the next one. So of the two, I just prefer what came down from the Department of Education. So I'm not going to support this resolution. I will support the next.
So I believe that it is the parent's fundamental right for the upbringing of their child. This resolution, I think, is in combination with the new policies. This is a resolution versus a policy, so technically there are three different aspects, but along the same lines. I've supported this from the beginning, but I'll need that very clear, and I will support it again.
So I would just like to make it clear that if you do not vote with this resolution, that means you're voting and standing against the resolution. So I would just like to figure out what it is that you cannot stand by with this resolution as part of our discussion.
Just vote. How will stand on policy versus a resolution?
Is there, is there something in here that you can't agree with? That would change your mind about making a statement from the board versus, because a resolution will charge administration to create further policy, which we know is going to have to come down the line at some point, considering new model policies on the table with the Virginia Department of Education. So again, I would just like to clarify that if you are not voting, let me, let me, right. If you are voting against this resolution, it's because you are stating that you do not stand by the statements within this resolution.
No, I think our policy says that. I think what we have in policy and what we have in guidance that we will put out and introduce now states that, that we don't need the resolution, is my belief.
However, if the following policy comes through that we're going to be discussing tonight, it does not cover all the things mentioned within this resolution. So I would like to make that point known, that policy, although I again will fully support and agree with what Dr. Horne and administration has come up with, that, that is not encompassing everything that's mentioned in a statement, which is a resolution. Resolution, as we know from prior administration, is simply that, just a statement, that that is what the board's position is. So with that being said, I will guess call a question.
Ms. Anderson? Mr. Goffin?
No.
Mr. Jennings? Mr. Jennings?
Well, we could sit here all night abstaining and having tied votes. Before I vote, I'll just add that model policies by the Yonkin administration are forthcoming, that we are hashing out to incorporate into our own policy, and I will not support the resolution.
Please perform some clapping, please. Aye.
The motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, and thank you for your time. Over the past few weeks, the cabinet level, we worked on model, we worked on a proposed draft for you to consider, based on the model guidance that was sent out and received in, earlier in September. What we did was, we took a look at our current policies and regulations that were on the books, and we found IIA, IIA-g, and IIA-B. IIA being instructional materials, IIA-g being guidelines for the selection of instructional materials, and IIA-B dealing with supplemental materials. We utilized the language in the model guidance from the Department of Ed, and we believe that certain aspects of the model guidance fits more into existing policy to refine and restate, and restate what instructional materials, defining parents and guardians, and especially explicit content, using the exact language from the model guidance. We also feel that there is a host of material inside of the model guidance that is more regulatory in nature. Hence, the recommended draft coming to you to change IIA-g to IIA-r, maintaining many of the components that were already in policy, which is in, in policy and reg, which is in black and green, which is the information that we are recommending to you that we put in. We also felt that it was important to draw forth the fact that we already had language discussing R-rated material at the various levels, and it seemed highly counterintuitive that there could not be an R-rated piece of material in elementary or middle school and potentially could be content with sexually explicit, sexually explicit in nature. And so we felt it was prudent to draw that out and clarify. And it lays out a series of steps based on model guidance that principals and building administrators in the division will follow in the realm of notifying parents, deferring to parents listening to the concern when somebody comes forward and providing without penalty an alternative assignment and instructional material. And then within policy IIA-B, with the, with the enhanced language in policy IIA, we felt it prudent to make it known via policy that any, that any work with supplementary materials would also be subject to the same oversight and jurisdiction essentially as the guidelines for instructional materials. And so with that, I will leave for any questions or anything else the board might have. This is the, the, the strategy that we felt worked best as far as revealing the approach to you since we already had a host of policy and material on the books. And so we utilized existing language and then incorporated new guidance from the DOE.
Are there any questions of Dr. Horne?
If any, yes. The major question, it really doesn't have to do with policy itself, but in allowing parents to have obviously the out, in, out information, but having those forms available for them to have access to.
Question? Yes, I agree with you a hundred percent, Ms. Anderson, as far as the ability of our, of our constituents and our, and our parents and guardians to be able to easily access information. As of gone through the transition and the onboarding, one of the, one of the glaring deficiencies that, that I've identified and is, and is agreed upon by everybody at the cabinet level truly is the, the woes with our division website. It is, it is not standardized across the board. You have some schools that I, I would suspect are not ADA compliant with their websites. And so we have been able now to finalize an agreement with Final Site, correct? Okay, with, with Final Site, which is a vendor to enhance our division and school websites. Our plan is to launch those at the beginning of the new school year, the new, the new semester in January of twenty-twenty-three. So we've been assigned a project manager we are going through to ensure ease of accessibility, and that will, and those, those types of documents, forms, and that type of information will hold a prominent spot on those websites. And even better, when you go to the division website and you subsequently go to the other websites of the individual schools, the buttons, the homepage, they will be similar so that you're not trying to figure out how to access the form via a individual Google site that Gordon Barber might have versus a WordPress site that the high school might have. So putting that all under one umbrella will absolutely make the communication and the ability for our stakeholders to find this information much easier. And that will be definitely, that and many other things will need to have a prominent role on those websites. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions of Dr. Horne?
I, I don't know how the other board members feel, but since we have an audience here that would like some, know what we're going to do, I, I'm ready to vote on this tonight.
Okay. All right. I'd like a motion, please, to accept this policy.
Okay, I make, I make a motion, approve the draft. Policy IIA, IIA-r, and IIA-B as presented.
Thank you. Now a second.
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm in favor, but I'm going to make just a statement.
Yes.
I think this is, if you're talking about explicit, sexually explicit content, what we've just passed right here is really strong. Now, the reason I say that is, I, I say from being a thirty-year, it doesn't put the, who is held responsible is very important. And if you read that, who is held responsible is not the teacher, it's the school principal. So I can tell you, school principals are going to be very, very watching what their teachers are presenting very closely because it doesn't say the teacher is supposed to inform the parent. It says the principal. And I can tell you, that makes this a very, very strong policy.
All right, so can we have a official vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
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 Can we have closed session certifications, please?
For change to two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion on personnel or the requirements of the provisions of the Act of the Northern Department of Education. As authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia. Renunciation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees. Discussion on pupil personnel as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven K. A waiver of compulsory attendance.
Thank you. Do you have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Uh.
Thank you.
I'm about to go ahead and stage because she ate that shit up, bro. Yeah. Now.
We have closed session certification, please.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Department of Information Act, whereas two-point-two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second. Vote, all, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Goffin?
Aye.
Mr. Jennings?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinter?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows, five yes votes, no no votes, the resolution is approved by five to zero vote.
Thank you. Dr. Horne disposition of personnel actions.
Yes, ma'am. Recommended to approve the personnel action as presented in closed session.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the recommended approval of the personnel agenda to include salary adjustment, resignation, transfer and employment of staff, and extracurricular appointments.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now disposition of pupil personnel actions.
Yes, ma'am. Recommended, please, to approve the request for a waiver of compulsory attendance for pupil personnel case twenty-twenty-three dash oh-six.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the recommendation regarding P D two, zero-two-three dash oh-six.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, we are down to board comments.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion to make. The motion is, the Orange County School Board asks the Delegate Freedus to request a formal opinion from Virginia's Attorney General on the following question. Is legislative prayer lawful in public school board meetings?
Okay. Is there a second? No second here. Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Anything else? With that?
I, well, I, I mean, we've all seen it, but I mean, the audience here was wonderful. I, it, it, I wasn't looking forward to listening to two hours, but if it was like it was tonight, I'd listen to it again. It, it was, it was really outstanding.
Okay, with that being said, I will adjourn this meeting.